Jeff Hayes?
Hi, thank you. Again, my name is Jeff Hayes. I'm 1866 Northwest 23rd. I do have numerous questions and actually objections to the testimony that was just presented by staff and the applicant. However, I will go back to my initial statement that under ORS 227-178, this hearing has been improper. The ORS 227-178, per the staff's own exhibit, two staff report dated on 11/17 states that the time for approval, including resolutions, excuse me, they don't state that. They state that the date ended on March 28th of 2017. So all the time was up for this application. According to ORS 227-178, the time for approval, including resolution of all appeals, ended on that date of March 28th.
And we've noted that.
So it's actually improper to hear any of this based on that?
I can respond to that if the council would like. The statutory provision that you're citing, sir, ORS 227-178 creates a deadline for the city to take action on the application, and it's actually the developer's right to enforce that. It doesn't preclude...
It doesn't say that one way or another in the statute. It says it's up, period.
So I'm advising the council, and I advise you that it's actually the developer's right...
I have it here.
Sure. I have it right up on my computer, and I'm also familiar with the case law that's interpreted this particular statute, but the remedy...
It says, "Except for," as provided in subsections 3, 5, and 11 of this section, "the governing body of a city or designee shall take final action on the application of a permit, land, limited land use decision, or zone change, including resolution of all appeals under 227-180, within 120 days of application." At 120 days, the application is deemed completed. That was up, including the 60 days that was applied for as an extension, which is mentioned that they can do under, I believe it's section 2. It says it's up.
Well, we've noted your concern, but we turned to our legal...
Well, I'm just saying. And staff also notes that the time is up on the 28th. So...
Mr. Hayes, respectfully, we're going to take the advice of our legal counsel. I know you have other points you wanted to make.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that I believe legal counsel's mistaken. Additionally, I'd like to say that the original application submitted by the applicant should not be considered, have been considered as one proposal. It is clearly two distinct developments. Within the two distinct areas, applicant is seeking different modifications to the overall zoning changes. The two areas are not connected. So there's no reason for them to be considered as one. It's like if you're doing one on Second Street and one on 14th Street, they're not the same development, and they should not, they wouldn't be considered that way. Staff states in their reports, under background, paragraph 2, "These applications," plural, "were submitted as one overall package. Furthermore, staff repeatedly has referred to 'two halves, portions, areas, etc.' The only reason for combining the two is to allow the applicant to artificially manipulate a total density to achieve a number goal and thus, a unit number goal and thus a total sales goal." Also, we have ongoing concerns that if you approve this, there is no CCNRs that are subject to be presented for approval. You have...
One minute. One minute left.
Okay. I questioned their wetlands survey. Anyone who goes out there now can see where the track of the stream flow is. There's also within, in the deeds that are in the record, it shows that there are wetlands and Baker Creek, and refers to its high water line and banks, et cetera, as being owned by the city and accessible to the city and the public. This, there's been no indication of a flow of Baker Creek or anything like that. These are listed under two parcels on the deeds. To finish, I'd just like to say that while it may appear so, we're not opposed to the development. We just think that the concerns have not been met. There's too much for the area. The density is too much, the traffic's too much, and it, while it hasn't been addressed, the number of people in the small area is going to affect the livability for everyone there and in the neighborhood, Shatten community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is Tracy available?
She won't because...
Okay.
Why, I kind of like to ask a question of this staff, maybe from the... You raised an interesting point, someone I have... Why this was submitted, one application with a really two separate developments, you know, the style, the...
I don't know.
The feeling difference is completely different, and maybe they're contiguous, it's just desperately...
I don't know.
By borrowing existing...
By using the existing development to come up with that number, could you just talk to that a little bit?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks. So the two portions of this proposal, Baker Creek East and West, are actually contiguous. They are joined, they are joined by Shatten Claim First Edition. Shatten Claim First Edition is one row of lots which runs north-south, and so they are joined by the width of the Shatten Claim First Edition subdivision. So they are one piece. What makes it odd looking is the shape of the contiguous land area. So knowing that it is contiguous gives it the legal right to proceed as one proposal. The density issue is, in all of our planned developments, the density is averaged regardless of the shape of the planned development. And in this case, part of the planned development area was developed years ago before BJ2 went into the financial issues that it went into, and development stopped. So they are picking up on the undeveloped portion of that original BJ2 plan, the original Shatten Claim plan, and they're adding land to that planned development area, which is all contiguous. So they're just growing the size of it, and that also gives them the ability to utilize the density and density averaging. And again, just like any of our other planned developments, the density is averaged, or I shouldn't say all of them, but most of them, the density is averaged. This just happens to be an odd shape, and it makes sense logically and intuitively to talk about it in two different pieces because they're at opposite ends of this contiguous shape, and they have different characteristics.
There's not like they're, I think the, what they're implying is that they're trying to pull something over on us, but what you're saying is that it's, this is a common practice, a legal practice. We're acknowledging the fact that they are in fact using the existing density...
Absolutely.
For this, and that's totally above board.
It is.
Okay. Jeff? Thanks.
Okay. Do we have Casey Dawson?
Or Gary.
Or Gary? Okay. Do we have a Kirk Duncan? JW? No. That concludes...
Anybody in?
Now, is there any person who would like to pose a question to myself to address any of the opponents of this application? Okay? Hearing none? Does any representative public agencies wish to provide testimony?
None that wasn't already present in the staff report and decision document.
Okay. Now I come back to the applicant, and do you wish to respond to any of the opposing testimony?
For the record, Andrew Stamp for the applicant. I'll be real brief, given the late hour. I'd like to address a couple of the procedural points. Your attorney correctly advised you on the procedural matters. ORS 227-178 sub 5 talks about the 120-day period, but it says that it can be extended, and the total of the extensions may not exceed 245 days, which if you add to the original 120 days, puts it right at, I think, a year. So, you know, we're not even close to that deadline. We did extend the 120 days. I'm not sure exactly what, how many days, but I can just go ahead and give you whatever additional extension you need verbally on the record tonight, and if you'd like me to follow that up with documentation, I can do that as well. But, so that's not really an issue tonight. With regards to the issue of contiguous, generally, land use law is that contiguous means joining at one point. So if you could have two squares that touch at one point, there doesn't even have to be a foot of space that overlaps, that would generally be considered contiguous. And here, we have much more than that, so I don't think that's an issue either. There was some discussion by one of the opponents, and he kept mentioning variance law about hardships and things like that. That's not really appropriate here because we're not, we're not seeking a variance in the traditional section of the code that deals with variances. What we are really seeking is to deviation from the normal R1 standards. And what we're saying is those seven points that we raised warrant not applying the traditional 70-foot wide lot, 9,000-square-foot lot size. So all the things that we're bringing to the table, including a desire to meet housing affordability or workforce housing, I think that was a great word because that's really describing what we want to bring to the table with this development. So, you know, those are all those seven points is why we're saying, don't make us a normal R1 subdivision. And that goes back to the original point. If we took this land that zoned R1 and built big 9,000-square-foot lots, I don't think we'd have any, we wouldn't have very many buyers for them because there's just, you know, the testimony that you heard from the public even, the first gentleman that spoke... Forgot your name, sir. What was your name?
Mark.
Mark?
Mark Davis.
Mark Davis. You know, he said it pretty well. It was a very impassioned discussion. I think he said it really well. You need workforce housing. Okay. There was, there was a discussion about traffic, and the answer to that is you don't want to have, I mean, it's just general transportation planning. You've got these arterial streets. You don't want to have too many connecting points with those arterials because they create conflicts. And the whole goal with mobility is to limit the amount of conflicts. I'm sure you've heard discussions from ODOT talking about why they don't want driveways on their highways as they're, as they're going through the city of McMinnville. Because ODOT's focused on mobility, you're focused, of course, on access, and there's that balance there. How do you achieve mobility and yet have fair access? Well, that's same thing on this side of town. We've got arterials, we don't want to have too many connecting points. And if that means that a few people have to wait in order to get on the arterial, that is a better situation than having a bunch of car crashes on the arterial. So, you know, given the late hour, I think those are the only points that I really wanted to discuss. I think every other point was adequately addressed by staff or during our initial presentation, and I know Gordon's not here because he just wants to listen to me talk. So go ahead.
I shed one comment. Baker Creek is on the far north of Baker Creek North, which is not part of this application for consideration today, and we'll take all appropriate actions at that time to protect the creek.
So that concludes our presentation, our rebuttal. We do respectfully request an eye vote on ordinance 5021. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those that have testified this evening, do any of you wish to request that this hearing be continued in order to present additional evidence, arguments, or hearing regarding this application?
I'm wondering about a lot of people who were waiting to testify, but finally either probably on their way to work or bed or something. It'd be nice to give them an opportunity to somehow testify or present written documentation.
I'm wondering if many of them had an opportunity to do that at the Planning Commission, which we have that testimony apart of the record. But we can have a discussion about, at the council, what's your thoughts? I know it's a late hour. It's been late for all of us, but we, I think we planned to know that this would go late tonight, but it's, I think it was critical to get to this point in one, in one session. So, any thoughts?
Well, Remy does, for sure. Are we going to deliberate a little bit tonight?
Yeah.
Because I would like to do that, but I do kind of agree with him about having more of the citizens come in, but I would like to deliberate somewhat.
Okay, so can we go to deliberating?
No, I would advise that if, the council's not obligated to hold the record open because the initial evidentiary hearing was held before the Planning Commission, but it is, the council's right, if you want to, it is one of the motions that is available to you on the script there is to continue the public hearing or either to hold another hearing at a later date or to allow so many days for additional testimony to be submitted. The applicant apparently has an opinion on this.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Sir, it'd be our strong preference to close the hearing tonight and deliberate. And the reason we want to do that is we want to be able to get started, and we're really up against a time deadline to get going in this building season, and so it'd be our strong hope that we could deliberate to conclusion tonight.
So I think, I appreciate that, the applicant's opinion. My advice would be, you know, if you believe that there is testimony to be given out there that you haven't heard yet, that will weigh on your decision that you're going to make, that the people who left either didn't have an opportunity at the Planning Commission level or didn't have an opportunity to present written testimony tonight, or to have their views represented by those that stayed behind, and there's something in that testimony you believe is going to be compelling in the decision you make, then certainly there's a reason to hold it open. Otherwise, you know, it, there have been multiple opportunities, starting at the Planning Commission, and then tonight for folks to provide their testimony, and if you believe you've had enough, then moving forward to a decision is certainly appropriate.
I think that we have had tremendous amount of opportunity for public input. I do not see any point in holding the hearing open.
I agree. I feel like there's been opportunity to give written testimony, to give oral testimony. I feel like we have the information we need to make the decision.
The burden of proof is on the applicant, and they've clearly demonstrated that.
So I'm hearing across the table then at least a majority of you wanting to close the public hearing.
I would, my thinking on this is, I feel like I have one question that's kind of still out there that we didn't really, when we can't, through the materials we have, get to the bottom of, which is that, you know, this real high density that we're looking at, a lot of the gives in that are with the goal of achieving affordable housing for that isolated area. And I'm not sure that this flows through to actually meet affordable or workforce housing. So that's a big question that's looming in my mind. And I am also anxious, just, you know, as a body making a decision after midnight. It seems like a late hour, but Mr. Mayor, I will defer and go with your recommendation.
Well...
Honestly enough, I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with the concept of this being workforce housing. I think affordable housing might have been a poor choice of words on their part initially, but it is obviously workforce housing, and it is desperately needed in this community.
Are we starting deliberations before the hearing's closed?
Yes, I think we're moving into deliberation. So let's go back and just get a sense. Alan, do we close the hearing from your perspective?
Yes.
Remy?
Why don't you just see where everyone else lies?
Okay. Wendy? Adam?
No. I think too many people left that were on the list to sign up to testify, and that right there shows merit that they want to testify.
Okay. Kevin?
I'm fine closing the hearing tonight.
And Kelly? So by majority census, we are, we will close the hearing tonight. So I will close the public hearing.
To deliberation.
Now we go into deliberations, and we've got, we've got five things that, well, we've closed the hearing, so we can close the public hearing and we can approve, we can close the public hearing on the appeal process and keep the record open, or, or we can close the public hearing and deny. So let's open to a conversation and get some input, and then see if we're ready for a motion tonight. So I open it up among the counselors.
Well, as a continuation on of that thought, it's that I, of course, recognize the need for additional housing and lower-cost housing. The question is that we have a lot of different numbers that we've been given here, and everything that I have looked at doesn't correlate exactly to these numbers, not suggesting that you have intended to mislead with the numbers in here, but we have a, we're looking at a development that your minimum home price is going to be $240,000 plus homeowners association fees, and we have no idea what those HOAs are going to be. So whether or not this increased density is going to translate to actual affordable/ workforce housing, to me is something that is still open in my mind. I want the additional housing. I have no problem actually with the increased density because yes, there's a true need for it, but there's nothing that holds the, there's nothing that holds anybody accountable after the approval to guarantee that, that workforce housing. Now, I know that there have been some changes to Oregon state law, and it is possible to include a provision for approving a permit such as this, that a certain percentage of the housing would meet a number or a range that includes affordable housing or workforce housing. But I'm not sure if that's cart before the horse in terms of where we are with our own code and whether or not that would be applicable at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Let's see. I agree with Mark Davis. We need this project. I like this project. I like most of this project, I should say.
Except for the alleyways right now.
Now, this is, this is, you know, coming from input from others that are my constituents and friends and business associates and everything, and that's the livability of the, of the dense neighborhood, which you refer to as Baker Creek West. So to me, it's, it's, I understand all the processes and everything like that, and the wetlands and the open areas, this has all been taken care of. I'm confident of that. That's no problem. We do need this, this type of development in the city. I do think we just have to go with, with the flow on it since most of our economy is market-driven, to try and set restrictions on what the sales price is going to be and stuff. You can go with a person's word, but that could change depending on market and costs and recession and depression and everything else. But all in all, I like it. I think it makes sense, and I appreciate what the applicant has done about creating the open spaces under the recommendations of the Planning Commission. That's a good thing. And thank you for adjusting the six-month period. I understand it's beneficial for you to do it the other way, but not so much for other people. And what we're dealing with here is a neighborhood of a lot of people in a community of McMinnville, and we, we want to see the applicant be very successful in what you're doing. That's not an issue. We want profitability. We want you to win as much as the city of McMinnville to win, and our community is very intact. We really listen to a lot of people. So therefore, I think the criteria has been met for the project, I think. There's a few things debatable, but I think all the criteria has been met by the professionals and the applicant. And there's one thing I'd like to do to get my full support behind it as one member of the council, is to increase the lot sizes of the Baker Creek West and eliminate the 32-foot lots and go to 40 feet straight through. I say that, I say that because it is a large, compact area of a lot of close-knit driveways and, and concrete driveways, hardscapes, and that in doing so, you can improve the streetscape, cut down on the traffic and noise. Not a lot, but it would make a slight difference. It'd be less driveway cuts, more pedestrian-friendly. It would be beneficial to the community, I feel. And saying that, I realize it's a very small percentage of the city of McMinnville, this property. But we're dealing with neighborhoods, we're dealing with the feel and livability, which we know is the number one, the number one surveyed response by our citizens is livability in the city of McMinnville. And so I really feel a clash between affordability and livability. It's, it's the same old thing. So how do we get around that? To me, it's, it's kind of mediate this and say, it's a great project, but for me personally, to have my full support behind it, I'd like to see the increase in lot sizes on the 32-foot lots to 40 to meet the neighbor's lot. The three-foot setbacks, the five-foot setbacks, I think are just fine, but that's, that's where I sit on it, and so I can't fully support it without some kind of change on that.
Thank you, Alan. Who'd like to go next? Kevin?
Um, I, I just wanted to say first off that I am really impressed with staff preparation on this. Um, I just thought it was really well presented and, um, clearly took a lot of work between the staff and the developers to, to get this all buttoned up. And I just really appreciate that. Um, also want to thank Mike for setting me straight. I was a little hard on him earlier and he pulled me in the other room and showed me how ridiculous I was. And I appreciate that, Mike.
Behind closed doors, too, right?
Yeah. Took me down to woodshed and showed me the, the reality. So, um, uh, so thanks, Mike, for that. Um, so I don't really have, I don't, I don't have that reservations about the, um, the, the traffic flow in there. I, I think, um, that, that will be resolved as, as needed. Um, uh, I have to also say that I, I appreciate the, the desire to do infill here. I, I know we need more property and I, I really don't like seeing so much sprawl. Um, and, uh, I think this is, this is the right place for this kind of development. Um, I share Remy's concerns that I, I'm not sure this is going to really hit at that price point that is going to be, uh, super affordable. And we don't really have that guarantee that this is going to, I, it's getting us down that road a little bit. It, with the limited amount of, of space that we have like this, it's kind of like, I feel like, um, I, I, we're, we're, we're losing opportunities to solve the problem when we, when we, we have developments, uh, in this, in this size of a lot where we don't address it more aggressively. So I, I share her concern with that. Um, I, I'm hopeful that, um, having this volume of, of dwellings in McMinnville will, will, will lower the price of homes a little bit and, and especially with the apartment complex in here. Uh, I, uh, I also share Alan's concerns about the livability of this neighborhood. Uh, I mean, it's, we can't design it for them, but I just wanted to express that on the record that I, I, I'm a little concerned with, uh, the number of driveways that we'll see here. It, it kind of gives me the feeling of what you experienced walking down West Fellows. Not the most hospitable community right there. It's just, it's just not. And, um, and comparing that to, uh, to Alan's subdivision in Chaguen, which is also very dense, it's got a very great neighborhood feel. And, um, having, having the alleys made, made the difference on that one. So I, I, I'm an alley fan. Uh, I, I guess I drank the Kool-Aid, but, um, I, I, I think it, it lends to a community feel, a walkable community that this just is not. And so, um, uh, that's just my concern.
Thank you, Kevin.
Go next.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Um, so I, I too was really impressed with the planning department and the, um, how they took a very, very complicated application, obviously, uh, months and months of hard work and did a very thorough, um, application packet for us as well as a presentation. So thank you for that. Um, also, I would like to express my appreciation to the applicant for listening during the planning commission and, uh, coming, making some, um, changes to the plan. I think that shows, um, that they're interested in being a part of this community and, and having a good project. Um, and I'm sure it's appreciated by the people who gave that feedback. Um, I am not as concerned. I feel as if, um, being in real estate construction, I know that there's nothing available in McMinnville right now under $300,000, whatever price. And with the, the target for the lot prices, the business of real estate and, and development, construction is going to take care of the home prices on those lots. I mean, we don't have affordable lots, which means we don't have affordable houses. And whatever price point it hits, if it's in that, it's going to either be workforce housing or affordable housing. I think it's all needed. So just having that, um, priced lot even is going to provide opportunities for housing. So I'm not as concerned as Remy. Uh, I think it's going to be taken care of by market forces. Um, so, and I think the location couldn't be better. I, I really think it strongly, the criteria was strongly supported by, you know, the minor arterials and all of those things. The one thing I was looking at in coming into this was the, um, condition to, under, um, planned development that there are special physical conditions or objectives of a development which the proposal will satisfy to warrant a departure from standard regulations. That was the only one that I felt I really wanted to hear more about to make sure that that was the case. I think it was, um, that was strongly supported by both what the planning department, uh, presented and also the applicant with regards to the need for affordable or workforce housing, um, how this, uh, lot line adjustment would allow them to use a new type of housing that we haven't used before to provide that type of price point. I just feel like they really, they had a strong argument that, um, fulfilled that criteria. So I feel like they meet the criteria and I do hope that it's, like, there, it has a nice aesthetic. I'm glad the planning department added in the design standards. Uh, I think that will help to lay those concerns. Um, but I'm in support. I think it meets the criteria, so.
Thank you, Wendy.
I just realized I had one other comment to make. It was about the homeowners association. Um, is there anything we can put in here for, in like, uh, I forget the term, but for, for, uh, in order for this to move forward, that they have some sort, I want to see that established on a local basis. I don't want there to be an absentee homeowners association because typically the developer is the one who manages that and they're going to be based out of, out of Lake Oswego. I'd like to see that established locally.
Ron, how do we understand that at this present time?
Uh, typically homeowners associations are, uh, the management of those is individual and structured within each homeowners association. Um, I don't recall that the city has given direction on where that management resides previously.
But until it's established, the responsibility is on the developers.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
I, uh, in, in, in my neighborhood, technically there's a homeowners association, but there isn't, there, there isn't one that actually exists. It's still in the hands of the developer. And the homeowners have to take the initiative to take control of it, uh, to, to localize it. So I.
Well, usually the lot, voting is done by the number of lots you own. And so the landowner is going to own most of the lots, at least initially.
Yeah, right. Because most homeowners associations will, um, they'll pivot decisions based on a majority of voting, uh, parties and one property, one vote is typically what you get. And so as the lots sell, then it naturally transitions from the hands of the developer or the developing company to the homeowners because they own 51% or more of the lots in the subdivision. So it's a natural change.
Reason I raise concern, there's, there's a lot of land that needs to be maintained in this development and, and, uh, an absentee owner in a sense, like having to develop, having to maintain that is.
David has a comment.
Yeah. And I also know in the conditions of approval, it talks about the homeowners association several places being established by the CCNRs. That's typically going to be, that, that's going to be, those will be drafted, submitted to the city for approval prior to the final plat being recorded. And, and there'll be conditions on all lots. So it's condition 38 and, I mean, there, there's several that refer to it, but I see condition 38 here, um, that requires the CCNR shall be reviewed by and subject to city approval prior to final plat approval.
I'm usually not concerned. There's just so much property that needs to be maintained in this, um, in perpetu, in perpetuity. So I'm just, I really want to make sure that's tightened, tightened up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Kelly or Adam, any thoughts?
Adam, you want, go ahead.
Um, you guys have all made really great points. I would like to thank staff for the product you put together and the presentation. Uh, you know, I do have reservations about the density in Baker Creek West, but as far as if the criteria has been met and does it have merit to move forward, I would, uh, have to say that it probably does. Um, like Alan, I would, I would like to see, you know, we're definitely out of what I would consider affordable housing at, at the 32 lot. And so why not make them all 40 to create a better streetscape? And, you know, we just had a proclamation at the start of this meeting about five and a half hours ago about being Tree City USA. And, uh, you know, I think that we should take a streetscape into, into more context of, of a condition of this approval and not give them the variance of only having the amount of trees they do. Or, you know, making sure that the livability of that high-density area is the best that it can be and not just good enough to get the application through.
Thank you, Adam. Council President Minke.
I do feel the criteria has been met, um, resoundingly. I think staff has done an excellent job and I appreciate all input from staff. Workforce housing is desperately needed. I am not in favor of converting all the 32s to fours, 40s, uh, simply because from the discussion I hear, they're about $30,000 less than the 40s are going to be. And quite frankly, $30,000 is a down payment in some situations. I don't want, I want people to have as big an opportunity as they can to get into a house. And increasing that by another 30 grand is not going to help them. I don't see a great significant difference between the 32 and the 40. I just don't. And I think it's rude of us to consider shooting down people that might have a potential for a 32 by saying they all got to be 40s. That's kind of where I'm coming from. I'm very thrilled that Mike and Kevin worked out the transportation issue. I didn't really see that as a problem. Uh, I feel there's more than adequate out parking, uh, the wetlands. I'm fine with, it's probably all been met. So I see it makes criteria. And personally, I would rather not see the 32s be taken out of the mix.
Thank you.
Madam, Council President, if, um, with that, would you be willing to also support, if we legally can, uh, to impose a condition for approving this, um, permit, a requirement, um, that has the effect of establishing the sales or rental price for a new multifamily structure, um, to be designated, uh, for sales or rent as affordable housing, as I believe is allowed, um, under ORS 215 dot 427. Uh, I believe that without having a land use regulation and of course, I'm very far from being an attorney. But I believe.
So on, on, if I could, Mr. Mayor, indulge me for a moment here. Um, on, on that issue as well as the issue of asking the applicant or to eliminate the 32-foot lots in favor of 40-foot lots, I, I, I'm afraid neither of those issues were adequately raised during the public hearing portion to allow the applicant an opportunity to address those. And my advice would be if the council wants to move forward with imposing conditions of that sort, that really the public hearing ought to be reopened to allow the applicant to address those issues, to talk about the impact of those types of things on, uh, their project and, and to address whether or not they believe their, there, 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 there needs to be some discussion about how the imposition of those additional conditions are necessary in order to satisfy, um, the code requirements. So, so I, I think that would need to be put out there and, and an opportunity for, for comment on those because they were not noticed criteria. Um, and, and I'm not sure there was discussion about that adequate to allow the applicant an opportunity to address it or others.
Um, well, may I just ask or position that, um, the applicant did raise the issue of affordable housing, um, which I questioned, uh, and we, there was some discussion on. And according to their proposal, um, a larger percentage, um, than I, than I suggested or that, that is allowed here or that is required here and what, uh, in, in the suggestion, they're already suggesting that a larger percentage, um, would, would be affordable housing. So in a way, asking to, a guarantee of a 20%, when the suggestion that's made in the application is that 26.9% would, would ultimately be affordable housing is, uh, really only asking them to, to guarantee not even two-thirds of what's already promised in the application.
What, what was the statute that you were saying? 215?
Thanks for bringing that point up, Remy, because it kind of felt like they, they changed their song halfway through. We're not talking about workforce housing. Like, that's not what was in the application, raised that way. So I agree with you.
So again, I, my advice is if you're gonna, if you're gonna try to impose a condition like this, you want to get it all on the record during the public hearing and give an opportunity for the applicant in particular, but all sides to be able to comment on it so that you can inform your deliberation that way. I think, I think it's, uh, um.
She did mention it during the public hearing, though.
I, I, I understood. It's a risk if you throw something in at the last minute without having even, it's all about fairness and giving everybody an opportunity to comment. You're going to be talking about imposing a condition that limits how they can sell certain lots or the size of the lots. I, I think you need to make sure that that's out there and that you, you, you question them specifically on the impacts of those things. Give them an opportunity to testify on the impacts rather than speculating about them so that you have, you have a fully informed record before you make your decision. I think if, if you want to bulletproof your decision, you need to open up the hearing in order to address those specific issues and give, give the parties an opportunity to address them. And that's.
Yeah.
Advice that can be taken or rejected, obviously. And I feel to support our counsel from our attorney. So I still need to know a direction that you would like us as a council to go tonight. Um, are we, are we ready to make a motion?
Well, I'm just wondering if we have any input from the applicants at this time.
We would have to open the hearing again.
And if we open, then we could see ourselves.
Well, I don't want that to be the, the holding point here. I mean, I, I tend to agree with Remy that the application mentioned this, a percentage of this for affordable housing. I'd like to hold them to it. She did mention it during the public hearing. Whether they addressed it directly or kind of skirted, you know, um, the, the answer. The changing of the, of the lot size wasn't discussed in the public hearings. If we want to talk about that, we'd need to open public testimony.
So we're talking about, the statute's talking about multifamily housing?
Right. That would be 126.
Oh, that's right. Well, that's why it's not good to make decisions after midnight.
I guess one, one of the concerns I have, and this is one thing that happens a lot in the planning commission, is trying to work something from the dais that's more complicated than we imagine. Um, yeah, after midnight. So just as long as we don't figure out a, a mechanism for addressing this that's fair and thorough and looks at all angles.
Yeah. I mean, with that, I, I honestly, I cannot render a legal opinion for you on this without having more time. This is a five-page bill that you're asking me to look at. And I, and I generally familiar with it, but I'm not sure if it applies in this situation because it's talking about multifamily housing units, which is not what, what's before us right now. Um, although.
Well, they're 326.
We have the 70. And I just, I, without us having adopted some code on this, I'm, I'm leery to give you an opinion off the cuff. So the very least, if it, if it's something you want to pursue, you at least, you at least have my advice that you give the applicant an opportunity to comment on it and then. Okay. For legal opinion, I'll, I'll render one for your next meeting.
To my issue of the size, I would rather not open another public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd second that.
Yeah, I think I'm ready to decide.
Okay. So are we ready, are we ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay. Um, so let me read, um, okay. The motion is that based on the findings of fact, the conclusionary findings for approval and the material submitted.
and the materials submitted by the applicant, I move to adopt ordinance 5021. So that's what the motion will be. So I will call for a motion.
I saw move.
Okay. And it is, am I, have you done?
Moved and seconded, but then I, I do want to note that there was one item that was discussed.
Yeah, which the additional item that Alan.
Right, which, which was condition 26, which was discussed with the applicant during the, the hearing. And there appeared to be agreement that, that condition 26 would be changed from six months following preliminary plat approval to six months following final plat approval.
And there was also an amendment that Heather put up there.
Yeah. And then on condition four, there was a typographical error from 111,393 square feet to 11,393 square feet. And on condition three, with the FSD 60 lots, the front yard setback was supposed to be 15 feet rather than 20 feet. Those were the three.
Wasn't there a slide up there that she put, she added something additional on the slide that wasn't in our packet? Ron, do you remember that? There was one of the, was it one of the conditions?
There was. I don't have that in front of me. I, I think, Mr. Mayor, you may have that in front of you. That.
He amended, there was like a.
A condition that.
Paragraph below that said something, I'd suggest we add this.
No, let me see if that's, that's right here. Yeah, okay. And then here we go. I've got it right here. This is additional language. So at the, at the end of paragraph one of condition four, then there was additional language that was, that reads as follows. Additionally, track C and track D of BCW and active space A of BCE, Baker Creek West, CE, sorry, shall be landscaped with turf, appropriate benches, tracts, and picnic tables need to be provided and reviewed by the landscape review committee as part of the landscape plan. All detention areas and passive open spaces shall be landscaped and reviewed by the landscape review committee as part of the landscape plan as well. That's what, that's the additional language that.
Correct.
She had.
Right. Thank you. Are you feeling comfortable with what has just been moved? It has been moved by Councilor Rudin and seconded by Council President Minkie. We will now have David read the ordinance by title only. Is that correct?
Yes.
You keep, you keep me on the straight and narrow and I'll keep you on.
Oh, yeah, that thing. All right. Thank you. This is ordinance number 5021 and ordinance amending the zoning map designation from EF 80 exclusive farm use 80 acre minimum to R 1 PD single family residential plan development on approximately 13.6 acres of land and from R 1 single family residential to R 1 PD single family residential plan development on approximately 17.23 acres of land. And amending plan development ordinance number 4626 to encompass an additional 30.83 acres of land to allow variation in lot sizes and setback requirements to include a reduction in the front yard setback for certain lots from 20 to 15 feet, a reduction in the side yard setback for certain lots from 10 feet to either 7.5, 5, or 3 feet, and a reduction in the exterior side yard setback for certain lots from 20 feet to 15 feet.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that again, aren't you?
No, just one time. So I'm going to turn to Melissa to poll the council with Council President Minkie last.
Okay. Counselor Dropkin.
Allow me one deviation. Mr. Root and Mr. Will, are, we have a long history with local builders building for our community. And I truly hope and trust that as you move forward with this development, that you will be true to that and that you will provide affordable housing for our community, which to me is a big trade-off for these major variations. And with that, I vote aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5021 passes unanimously and will take effect in 30 days. Okay. Now do we have one ordinance?
We do. We still have one more.
You guys, that's what you told me to do, right?
You're right, you're right. You're right. There's one more one.
Okay.
Only 5020.
Okay. We have ordinance 5020 and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from residential to commercial and from commercial to residential on portions of an existing property and lot of record and rezoning portions of said property from a combination of EF 40 exclusive farm use, 40 acre minimum and R 1 single family resident and C 3 general commercial.
Before you continue, I want to make sure that there isn't something else you're supposed to read there at the end. Yes. Okay. We're good to go.
Okay. Chuck, do you want to give us some insight into that just briefly?
Yeah, but the, this 20 is. Okay, sorry. Before we go on, going back to the ordinance 5021, just to state for the record that this decision of the council on ordinance number 5021 may be appealed to Luba by filing notice of intent to appeal with Luba within 21 days after the council's land use decision becomes final. And it becomes final 30 days from today's date. Okay?
Okay.
Chuck?
Oh, right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. So this is the ordinance 5020 for the comprehensive plan map amendment and zone changes. I can provide a very quick, brief overview. All the details of the requests are in your packet for your consideration, but there is one change I want to touch on. Basically, to summarize very quickly, it's an application for comprehensive plan map amendment. It changes on two parcels of property at 2121 Northeast 27th Street, the location of Jay's Landing Bar and Grill. They recently submitted an application to partition the lot into two properties and that spurred us to look into the zoning on the property in more detail. And we discovered that there is two comprehensive plan designations that apply to the property and three zoning districts that apply to the property. So looking into the history of the property, we determined that there was previous land use desigisms, including an annexation to the north of the subject site, which is down here adjacent to 21, or adjacent to 27th Street. This annexation rezoned property to R 1, so majority of it retained in R 1 zoning. There was another annexation in subsequent years that brought this property into the city and rezoned it eventually to a commercial use and left out a portion of the existing subject site, which still retained its, its county zoning. A survey was recorded in 1995 that created the existing lot of record. And that is the lot that was now requested to be partitioned, which was approved by the city because it met that review criteria to do that. So their request at this point is kind of twofold. One, to remove the county zoning that applies to both of the properties and to designate each, each new property as a single land use designation on the comprehensive plan map and a single zoning district. The review criteria, review criteria for each of those is the same and is listed here. Just a quick summary of some of the findings that are all included in the decision document that are, that is attached to your packet. We found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. It corrected the irregular districts that applied to the property and that, and it's more consistent with the existing uses, the historical uses and the proposed uses of the future property. The residential designation's consistent with the surrounding area. It's an R 1, uh, single family residential zone in, in the majority of the areas around there. And utilities and access can be provided to both of the sites and will be required as part of the partition process. Since the planning commission meeting where we held a public hearing, we did receive some additional public testimony, which we provided to you and you have a hard copy in front of you again today. So original condition of approval that was recommended by staff and by the planning commission was to, in the future, at the time of building permits, if they were ever requested for the southern parcel, which is going to be the commercial parcel, if in the future any building permits were required, that landscaping would be required along the western, northern portions of the site to provide buffering from the commercial property and the residential properties to the west. We received testimony from a neighboring property owner that had concerns about level of noise and activity at the site now and requested that it be considered to be added now as part of the zone change. We did contact the property owner and communicated that to them and shared this with them. And they agreed that they'd be willing to add landscaping at this point in time to the western property line that will provide buffering between the commercial use and the residential property. So staff is suggesting that the condition of approval that was shown in the zone change 2-17, which was the zone change that dealt with the commercial property, we're suggesting that condition of approval number, let me pull it up quick. Condition of approval number four from that document be amended as it's shown on your screen here today. And basically it changes that, the landscaping requirement to be required now at the time of rezoning and that it would be tied to the issuance of building permits on the northern parcel. I didn't mention this, but it's mentioned in the staff report. They do intend to construct a single family home on that northern parcel, which will be zoned, single family residential. The property owners who also own the restaurant intend to live in that home as well. They're planning to install landscaping with the construction of the home, so they'd like to tie it into that and do it at the same time. Tying it to that, issuance of building permits there will give it some, you will ensure that it'll be done at some point in time in the near future. So that's what we're suggesting is the modification to address the testimony and the property owner has agreed to that. They didn't come to the meeting tonight to stay through the previous public hearing, but it has been communicated to them and they're comfortable with that. So.
So the, the change will address the written testimony that was received after the hearing was closed?
It would, yeah.
Okay, great.
So any further discussion or questions, Chuck?
Just a quick one, Chuck. So this, there's nothing else besides the timing of the landscape burn, right? Landscape border, whether it's before or after construction starts?
Correct. We would require it to be installed prior to building permits being issued. And normally we, we allow them to put the landscaping in after the building permits issued, prior to final occupancy. So we'll probably tie it to that during the building permit review.
So, I'm confused. Time is it?
Almost time to get up.
Past your bedtime, Alan.
So are we, so this, the, the citizen that wrote this letter, are we complying with her request then?
Yeah, we would be.
Okay, that's right. That's good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. We will have David read the ordinance by title only.
Thanks, sir. This is ordinance number 5020 and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from residential to commercial and from commercial to residential on portions of an existing property and lot of record and rezoning portions of said property from a combination of EF 40 exclusive farm use 40 acre minimum, R 1 single family residential and C 3 general commercial.
Okay. Call on Melissa to poll the council with Council President Minkie last.
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
And the ordinance 5020 passes unanimously and will take effect in 30 days. I think, yep, that's all we need to do. We will dispense with reports from councilors on committee and board assignments, department heads. And let me just share tonight how proud I am of, of how well we communicated tonight and we worked through some very tough things that were in front of us. Ron, if you and Chuck will take back to the group, how much we appreciated the efforts that's been put in. I know many of us met with you on a one-to-one basis to be prepared. And so thank you so very much. And like I say, last time we met, we had the shortest meeting. Tonight, we have set a new record. Okay? So we will close our city council and thank you.